Questions and answers up here. I will be opening the floor to anyone that has a question. Um, so think about things as we go along. If there's something that you don't feel is covered, you want to ask about it, go right ahead. Okay? Uh, the first thing I'd like to do, and just FYI candidates, you'll each have roughly three minutes to provide answers as we go along. I'm not going to set a timer, but you know, you can all be pretty reasonable about that, I think, so.
I'm a resident of Lennar two here for 2019 ninety-eight. Uh, my wife, Chrissy and I, um, my name's Jerry up here, uh, we have four girls and I've been a teacher over at my school for the last eight years.
Test. My name is Brett Phillips. Um, I'm a resident of Lennar two thirty years. I, my wife, Sa- my wife Sally and I, uh, have lived here that long, been married twenty-three years. Our three children have gone to Lennar two schools, who graduated, had good experiences there. I have been a public school teacher for thirty years, uh, ten of them here at Lennar two. As a junior high school English, uh, teacher, and a track and cross-country basketball coach and athletic director. I've been a twenty-year educator Jefferson, in the Jefferson City Public Schools. Thirteen of them at Jefferson City High School where I taught sophomore and junior English. Uh, I taught, I was assistant track and field coach for twenty years at Jeff City. Assistant cross-country coach, eight years, and I spent twelve, the last twelve years as head cross-country coach at Jeff City High School. The last seven years I've spent teaching at the Jefferson City Academic Center, which is the alternative high school in Jefferson City, and I taught, uh, junior and senior English there.
Hey, I'm AJ Womack. Um, my wife and I recently moved here about a year and a half ago, and, uh, she's from here, so, uh, I guess I'm the, she brought me here, not, we absolutely love. Uh, I have, you know, nine years of teaching experience, uh, from the eighth grade all the way through the, the college level. Uh, most recently got my doctorate in, uh, science education with teaching of curriculum instruction at MU. I'm currently a senior data analyst, uh, at the state, um, running a whole bunch of calculations and analytics and visualizations for multiple programs across the state.
Hi, I'm Jamie Bish. Um, I have been an Osage County resident now probably, I think seventeen years. Uh, I, of course, work for Department of Health, uh, for the Bureau of WIC Nutrition Services. Part of what I do right now is basically I lead up big projects, so one of the big things we did recently was we pushed out E-WIC, which was taking our WIC participants from checks to a card. Um, I have three children, an eighth grader, a fifth grader, and a second grader, so quite a lot going on other than taking them to activities and coaching volleyball and archery.
Okay, now I can hear that, that's good. Alright, um, so here's the first question. Uh, Jamie, I would like your answer first. One of the selling points at Lennar two for transitioning to a four-day school week was to address the issue of teacher retention. Uh, but the school continues to see a significant number of teachers leaving the district. And if you're elected, what would you do to address that problem?
Well, I, first thing I think I would do is probably reach out and talk with the teachers and get a better feeling as to why they think that, um, either their coworkers are leaving or why they choose to stay or go from there. Um, working at a hospital previously, what we would do is we would do surveys and determine, you know, where we were falling, and then we would look to improve the scores based on those surveys. So, a lot of that is to me just reaching out to those individuals, finding out, you know, where they feel the concerns are. Um, you know, as for that four-day work week, I, I know there was big hopes that that would work. Um, I don't think that that's something to give up on just yet. I think it's too early to decide if that is made an improvement or not. Um, you know, with the continuing changes in staff, you know, that's always going to impact how things work in a district. Um, so I think just, I don't know, building your community, talking with them, building your relationships. I, I would probably start there.
Okay. Dr. Womack?
Ah, okay, so I think that to first address the issue of teacher retention, you have to, like you said, look at why these teachers are actually leaving, and to really understand, uh, you know, some are for retirement, there's other reasons that these teachers are going elsewhere. So, um, we're brainstorming, also looking at doing exit surveys. Um, at the state, we also do exit surveys for all of our, um, people who leave the state. And I'm actually part of the team right now who are doing machine-like analytics to actually predict, like, a profile for people who are off to leave. Um, I'd like to transfer those skills into this position as well. Um, what else? Uh, starting with the four-day school week. Um, everyone probably saw my presentation, if you didn't. Um, I don't know, I think there's a lot of, um, milestones that were not reached whenever. They said there was a lot of reasons why we would go to the four-day school week, and, um, I don't think a lot of those milestones have been met. I think maybe reexamining what that means for our school and our, uh, students within the board should look at. But also, it changes the multi-faceted issue and, um, it's in all aspects.
Thank you. Brett?
Uh, I think my primary job as a, uh, school board member would be assisting in, in, uh, hiring and retaining quality personnel. I think our number one resource is our human resource. In any school district, that would be the approach every single time. I think we should examine how we're marketing ourselves as a district. I think that any opportunity to increase teacher pay, we should absolutely do that where it's physically responsible to do so. Um, and that would be a main reason, probably, that a small school district is losing personnel. I would say that probably is something we're going to be, it's a battle we're probably always going to be fighting to a degree, but we need pushback on a rationale, pushing back on a rationale is looking at how we can go ahead and increase attendance and increasing teachers' pay. Um, four-day school week, uh, we have it. It's, it's board policy right now. I s- you know, I assume it was supported by the board, supported by, uh, by the, by the, by the faculty and staff. Uh, I'm not running on platform, I'm just making changes, but if it's come to a vote for me, I am voting against a four-day week. I am for a five-day school week. The reasons are, I guess, number one, I don't necessarily want a kid to go seventy-two hours absent having instruction. Uh, secondly, I think activities, athletics suffer with the four-day week, uh, with regards to practice transportation. If you have games on a, on Monday, and contests on a Monday, if you have a mission rule, if you have to go ahead and go to a full-day school, half-day school day before you can participate, you can go seventy-two hours, the kid cannot be able to participate. When seventy-two hours is passed, it puts a certain disadvantage. Might not come up that much, but it does come up. Um, I think it puts kid people and the community and the childcare disadvantage. Uh, I don't think a four-day week model is the real world. Now, we have that policy, and it's not like, you know, not like beating that board drum or anything, but if it comes to me, I'm going to vote for a five-day week.
Thank you. Auburn?
I'm gonna hit on some of the things that Brett just did. I mean, as far as teacher retention and stuff like that, I believe he hit on a, a major talking point there. I mean, the, the teachers are the ones in the trenches there doing the work. Uh, again, we are in a smaller school district, uh, probably funding is a, a issue though as well, but those teachers, it's, I guess it's, uh, employees market right now because there's lots of openings, and there's lots, and there's teachers, not enough teachers fill it. So, they're probably going to go to where they can make more money. Uh, we gotta figure out some way and be responsible about it to, to get, to increase their salaries because, folks, you know as well as I do, ain't everybody's looking for people to work these days? And you can go to Walmart and make more money than teachers are making right now. So, that's kind of where I look at that, or from that standpoint, I'm going to be for the teachers. Uh, but again, we need to get their input on things as well, be responsible, et cetera. The four-day school week, I've had mixed emotions on that. I mean, I can go either way. I can see, I mean, I've talked to some of the kids and whatnot, they kind of like it. Uh, but being a teacher myself, as he says, those, those extra time, uh, that you don't see those kids and miss out on some stuff that, you know, that they could probably benefit from a five-day, but I can see probably why they went to it. The four-day probably to, uh, cut back on some, you know, monies in the district as well. So, that's kind of where I stand on that.
Alright, thank you very much. Uh, next question deals with the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund, which is ESER. You've heard a lot about this, I'm sure, uh, with, the ESER three level now. Um, some schools have chosen or are talking about utilizing these funds to give teachers an increase in salary. Uh, but the question becomes, how do you sustain that? And I would just like to know your feelings on how ESER funds should be used, should they be used for salaries or anything of that nature? Dr. Womack, we'll start with you.
Alright, um, that is a one-time line source, so we have to treat it as such. If we're actually going to spend that money on, um, continuing, um, financial needs, you know, like, like a salary would be, I feel like that's an efficient use of that time, uh, or that money. I think we need to make a budget where we are not deficit spending, and we're not relying on these ESER funds to actually get the promotions that we need. So, how do we actually increase those salaries? I mean, I think we just need to talk to the community, uh, we need to talk to, um, leadership across the, you know, the town, and that might, that might be there. We, we see it around us, we see it in the football program, like, if we're able to raise the funds, um, so, yeah.
Jamie, we have your answer, please.
Um, I'm not as familiar, I'm going to be honest. I'm not as familiar with these funds. Uh, so the first thing I would have to do is probably read into it more to see exactly how those funds can be utilized, to make sure we're not going against anything that might cause our school to get in trouble. Um, but, you know, I agree with AJ. Definitely, we don't want to do something that we can't sustain long-term. I keep hearing that the class sizes keep growing. Um, I listened to the school board last week or last month, and they were talking about needing another teacher for third grade. Uh, we can't keep paying for that if we don't have the funds, so I agree. We're going to have to find other options, see what we can do, uh, to help support the teachers. But I don't know that using these funds would be a benefit. Uh, but maybe we could use it to promote, um, I don't know, some kind of motivation, some kind of bonus to the teachers, something to help get them to stay. Maybe there's equipment they need, um, you know, there's always technology advances, so that's probably where I'd go with that.
Okay. Uh, Robert, what's your take on it?
Well, I think I kind of do this in the newspaper article a little bit. Yes, it is one-time funds. Uh, we can't rely on it for being a source of a raise every year for teachers. Uh, I think we need to, to work on, I mean, if we got issues within the facility or whatever, need to be addressed at the time, uh, we need to work on that. We need to work on technology, um, technology's here to stay. I mean, no matter what job you have these days, we're going to have to, the kids are going to have to have a knowledge of technology and how it works. And we need to provide those tools to them so that they can use that and be familiar with them to, to go on. Uh, maybe additional funding for, you know, the, the fate of the school or the maintenance department or whatever it may be, uh, but as far as using it as a, for raises, I don't necessarily agree with that.
Brett?
That source of fund needs to be used for curriculum enhancement in some manner. Um, like, I think all my colleagues just said, it's not rational to use a one-year source of income to bump up salaries because you can't maintain, it's just not physical possible, and that would be, answer it that way, but I'm, I would be for any type of curriculum enhancement, technologically, technologically wise or otherwise, is the way those funds should be used.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we're going to stay with school finance for just a little bit. Um, at a recent board meeting, uh, an audit report was presented, and one of the areas of concern noted, uh, that the bank reconciliation process needed to be a little more clear. Uh, the auditor recommended hiring an outside CPA firm to handle this. How do you feel about that? Do you think that's a good use of the district funds? Or do you think the board and administrators should be able to handle that themselves? Brett, let's start with you.
Bank reconciliation.
Um, yeah, the process, I wish, you know, so, so, it was a phrase used, bank reconciliation process.
Okay.
Um, with my knowledge of this, which is limited, having never served on the school board before, uh, I would say we need to look outside source of it. That's, but however, I'm just going to have to draw my colleagues for that. That's just not, simply not something I'm familiar with.
Okay, fair enough. Uh, who then, Albert?
Since it's, you know, been brought up before, I, I'm not sure if we need actually to have somebody else come in, but I am, uh, pretty adamant about when you're talking about money coming in and out of the schools, uh, no matter what it's for, what program, uh, there needs to be several people doing several things. As far as money coming in should be handled by one person, money going out should be handled by another person, and I think that might clear up some of the transgressives that they might have.
Dr. Womack?
I don't know. I feel like just the process of, of bank reconciliation would be a good idea because it brings transparency and a third party into that picture. However, it's probably possible for the board themselves to keep each other accountable and make sure that those funds are moving in and out appropriately. So it's not just under one person or two people, but making sure that it's across the entire board. Keeping the entire board accountable would be also a way to make those funds accountable to them.
So, um, a lot of what I do right now for WIC is I research all of our financial transactions that come through, and I do my own personal auditing, um, for our EROs. So, this is the first I've heard that someone else isn't watching or monitoring that fund, so I'm absolutely in favor of someone else, and like you guys said, I mean, it could be someone else on the board. Um, but I also think we have lots of relationships with our banks here, so I don't know why we couldn't maybe reach out to our local banks, have them assist us with auditing, um, our bank reconciliation to make sure everything's, you know, squared away. So, I'm, I'm kind of surprised by that, truthfully.
Sir, go ahead.
The schools get audited every year by an outside firm, so, I mean, it's not that they have no oversight over themselves, or, I mean, just by themselves. So, there is actually somebody coming in to schools every year, doing the auditing. Uh, then they make recommendations on what things have been done right and things have been done wrong, so. That might be simple.
Absolutely. I understand what you're saying and, and agree with you. Uh, like I said, it was noted in that audit report that the bank reconciliation process needed a little fine tuning, and that was the gist of the question, is should the board and administrators be able to handle that? So, I appreciate you all for your answers there. Um, as a potential board member, um, we've talked about teacher retention and ESER funds and how to get everything to balance. Um, are there any areas of the budget, uh, that kind of scream at you and say, we need to work on this or work on that? Uh, or have you had enough to really review the budget, have you kept up with it, that kind of thing? Jamie?
I would call on you first. Um, unfortunately, no, I haven't had a chance to look at it, so I really can't give much input for it.
Um, personally, I haven't had time to go through line by line to see where all the funds are being spent, so I, I wouldn't have enough insight to, to say one way or the other.
Okay, we're going to stop right here. Let's go back. I'm going to just change the question a little bit, okay? What areas of the budget do you think need to be, you know, extremely important to focus? Where should your focus be? Right now, we have, I believe, it was reported forty-three percent reserves, um, which is a good healthy number, right? And we have the football program, I mean, I understand we've got a lot of donations. Um, we have a lot of work going on at the track, we have just a lot going on at the school. So, maybe we refocus and say, you know, what are your priorities for a good balanced budget?
You know, um, previously, when I worked at the hospital and we had to do our budgets, we had to basically plan ahead and think of how much funds do we need to continue operations? Um, so I guess I would first start with what, what is the school's objectives? What, what do we need to continue, you know, teaching our students, paying our teachers, paying our insurance, whatever it may be? Um, and, and I'm not familiar with it, so I definitely would have to learn a little bit more. But, uh, if I was looking at the budget, I think I would try to see if there's maybe some trends that, uh, we're not preparing for or not planning for, and, you know, maybe we could set aside funds better the year before to try to, you know, get ahead of that. Um, I mean, always you're looking at your costs and seeing, you know, why are we spending so much in certain areas? Um, I don't know, I, I, again, would probably need to dig down into it to get a better feel of where we need to start.
I, I believe education is first and foremost, to educate the students, uh, and so the main driver of that is going to be through teachers. And so making sure that the teachers are getting paid an adequate amount, or a proper amount for the work that they're putting in should be first and foremost on that budget. And then as things are needed by the community, we, the school can help supplement that as well as the community's supplementing those other costs as well.
Uh, with the surplus, which is kind of what this has come to, I guess, like, uh, to me, the school board definitely should have, and I would assume probably does, a rock-solid plan of how we're going to go ahead and distribute the surplus funds or use them above and beyond that's a basic obligation. There's, there are categories within the school budgeting that we're going to have to adhere to and earmarks regardless. Uh, we can't just, we're bound by rules in that regard. Um, I would hope with the surplus that we're looking at, our most important resource, which is our personnel, I would hope we're going to go ahead and enhance teachers' salaries if that's possible. But I do not know, and I'm not privy to the board's plan for what to do with the surplus money. I'm going to assume that, that, that we have to, and we do a big project in it. I, I totally understand that. I totally understand the football programs and the cost. Uh, but however, I would like to believe that our number one priority is our human resource and our curriculum enhancement, uh, above and beyond anything else. And I would like to believe that that probably is the case at our current boards.
I'm glad to see that we have the forty-three percent in reserves. Uh, again, being physically irresponsible is a good thing. Uh, I don't, I mean, we, the school district has been in a lot of far worse shape in the past, I know, uh, so. I think that, you know, we need to continue on educating the kids, uh, doing the things we can do, making sure that all the programs within the school district are taken care of, and that we're not neglecting one versus the other, and that we still have the resources to go forward to, to give those salary increases for those teachers for that redid and et cetera.
Thank you. Um, as far as educating students and the battle that seems to face, every district seems to face in keeping good teachers and limiting that turnover, um, that may well play into why Lennar two at the middle and high school level recently reported that twenty-two percent of students had at least one failing grade in one of their classes. So, uh, putting aside retention for a moment, um, and assuming for the sake of argument that there's just no money to pay them more or hire more teachers or what have you, what can you do? Or what would you recommend, as if you're elected to the board, to kind of address that problem? Let's start with Dr. Womack.
Alright, um, I don't know, this would, I believe that, starting from the root, I think right now our, our preschool kid, eight, as they're coming in, um, I don't know if they're going to be right for, for kindergarten, so I would, I would pump money and resources into, uh, the pre-K program and get, make sure that we have a solid foundation of our students coming in. And every year, as our, as those, as those kids move up, we're going to see growth in, in, uh, from there on out. Um, if you help them early and get on track and where they're supposed to be, on grade level, they're, they're going to be much more successful throughout their rest of their school career.
Brett?
Um, regarding the F of high, of students, correct? That percentage, is that, that basically, is that what I answered here? Regarding the rest of that, and, and ESER is related to teacher retention, that type of thing?
If you, what? Like I said, it could take away retention, obviously. If you could pay more money and you can, you know, get everybody fired up and maybe retain these teachers or bring in new teachers, uh, because you have all this might throw, suppose you don't have that money. I just want to, how do you would address it as a board member? Uh, what recommendations would you make to try to improve that situation?
Okay, yeah, I don't know. I, I, I think that F, uh, percentage of F has gone down, if I'm not incorrect. I might be wrong on that, but believing recently that we have done some work as a district to go ahead and address that. I think that's been happening recently. Now, having said that, you can't ever address that type of thing enough. Uh, I think that the assessments and preparing kids for the assessments when they're very young is extremely important here. Like, like, the, the, their initial state assessments, like that, that, whatever we can do to go ahead and enhance our programs in that regard is always going to be incredibly important, really regardless of how your kids are doing going forward. Uh, that's going to directly relate to your, to your persistence at graduation rate at, when they're, when they're finished. Uh, I believe that F percentages across the board in public schools are going up. I think it is related to student mental health. I think that is something that we need to jump on because everyone is going to have to going forward. Uh, the percentage of kids who have bipolar disorder, who are medicated daily for anxiety and severe depression has only gone up. It was going up before the pandemic. It's going up like crazy right now, and it is affecting every single one of our kids, and affects every single one of our classrooms at any size of town. And we need to get out in front of that and make sure that we are adequately training our faculty to deal with those types, those kids who suffer like that. Uh, because that's going to be directly related, it's, it's directly related to attendance, and it's going to be directly related to grades, and it's going to be directly related to graduation. It's, uh, it's not, we can't, I can't emphasize that enough. That's coming for all of us in education right there. We're going to have to go ahead and do a better job, and it's not, we're not trying or something. It's just simply that that has kind of been a thing that has been under-emphasized. It's nothing that you hear on any talking point nationally, but that affects us way more than anything any of us are going to hear on some news front that say national. That, that's a big deal. Um, anyway, I'll probably expand in my three minutes there.
No problem. Okay, Cover?
Yeah, I think, I mean, according, ESER is an issue, uh, within any school district. Uh, I think that he hit on something, the pandemic had something to do with it, I would say, because we have lack of, of, of instruction. Uh, kids are dealing with it, teachers are dealing with it, trying to figure out ways of, of catching their kids up. Uh, I mean, the, the teachers need support from their administrators out there to, you know, come up with some new strategies or help other teachers as well, uh, to help those kids to get back into the groove of things somewhat, so.
Okay. Um, I do, I'm coming to you next. Just relax.
I mean, I don't need to if you don't want me to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, I wholeheartedly think COVID has impacted our kids more than any of us really understand at this point in time. Um, you know, a lot of the discussions we've had at, you know, St. George is that our test scores are really showing that our younger age kids, so our kindergartners, our first graders, our second graders, they were impacted the most because, you know, they are used to being, being taught at home. Um, and unfortunately, they had COVID hit, and they didn't get that one-on-one that they needed. Um, so I'm going to go back to the data. I think that we're going to have to look at test scores, see where our kids are failing, see where we need to focus, uh, to help give them the assistance they need. Uh, but I think it's also going to take some really good teachers to be creative because it's going to be different for every student. Um, I, I don't think this is going to be solved in the next year or even the next five. I think it's going to take us some time to recoup from it.
Can I speak on the end for a second? So, I didn't, I didn't address the whole issue, you know, the percentage of F. Um, my mom always said, it's never about what it's about. I think sometimes you have to eat that in mind as, uh, the kids getting the Fs. There's got, like, these kids want to do well, but there's, for the most part, usually, in my experience as a teacher, there's outside factors that are keeping them from learning and keeping them from, um, being successful. So, addressing that and not just... So addressing that and not just, you know, finding a new thing that we need to overcome teachers, but maybe being just more proactive and as soon as life, behavior, like, moves them up.
Thank you all. In the past, the Lynn Community Teachers Association has been kind of not visible. They've kind of just stepped back or I'm not sure what the situation is there. But how do you feel about making them a more prominent part of this district? And what would you do to encourage that and how would you get that going? Jamie, let's start this one.
So I'm not familiar with that group. I guess I'd have to find out more of what kind of support they would provide to our community. I'm always about building community relationships. I think in general, maybe it would be great if Lynn could build a better relationship with even St. George. So I don't know, I'd be curious to see what they offer.
Okay, well, the, the LCTA is primarily, correct me if I'm wrong, Larry, because you're more familiar with the school workings, but my understanding, when, you know, the LCTA, these teachers at Edlin or two, I kind of worked together to help promote different aspects of education and getting teachers more involved with one another. They used to give monthly board reports. That has not happened in quite a while. So I agree, a good relationship with St. George is very important, but I think primarily the focus is on teachers at Lynn. Is that correct, Larry?
Yes, it was a, a school-wide organization that, you know, we, we talked from our side of different issues, you know, we talked to the board about salaries, about, you know, other, other aspects. We were involved with, you know, new policies of schools that related to, you know, curriculum and everything else that went along with that. And, you know, it was, you know, finding out and being able to work together is what it meant. So it made two different camps. And, you know, for whatever reason, you know, the teachers, we, we had people that were members of MSTA, MNE, you know, involved in different, in nothing at all. But we, we talked to the board about issues. We were very involved with, with, you know, everything from figuring out how we could use our money we had, you know, and really, and many times holding everything together. Through a rough time, it's all good times, so.
Okay, so with that clarification.
So what I'm hearing there is a great way to help our kids out with those failing grades. You know, bringing in expertise, bringing in people to say, hey, we're having this problem. How can you help us with it? Or what have you done in the past to solve this? So, I mean, again, I, I think where you can build relationships, you should, especially if it's going to benefit even one kid. So, I'd be a supportive.
Yeah, I agree. Rebuilding that relationship with the LCTA and like making sure that the teachers have a voice to us. But I don't, I don't know if that's necessarily the case right now. I don't know if the teachers have, feel safe enough even to like discuss or even share their thoughts and their ideas and maybe their concerns with the school board themselves. So being able and willing to listen to, as Brett said, our most precious resource as a district. Yeah, we need to rehandle that really good, that relationship back on track so that we do. If all these issues are going to be multifaceted, they take a lot of different input, but if we're really going to work with the nuance and not giving a voice to the teachers is a, is a trick our way to, to make sure that we're not optimizing our solutions.
Albert?
I'm not sure how it is here at Lynn, but I mean, I've been a part of the teachers association over at Fatima. Again, it's kind of like, you know, getting together with our, the good things and bad things within the district, having a voice, whether it's salary, insurance, et cetera. I think some of that maybe is fallen by the wayside sometimes because we've been told that you can't really do that anymore, type of thing. So the teachers kind of thought, well, we kind of lost our voice there a little bit. But we do good things as well. I mean, they'll have like recreational type things for the teachers to get rid, I mean, together and do some camaraderie and stuff like that. I think it's a good thing. Again, we need to have a voice. Some, you know, sometimes teachers are, are told, okay, you're going to follow change of command. So change of command starts with your assistant principal, principal superintendent, and we, they really don't have a opportunity to talk with the board members unless the board member directly talks to them about the situation. So if that communication gets opened up a little bit more, I think it'd be a great thing.
Brett?
I was in the Lynn Community Teachers Association back in the middle of the day. I think that is still, that is still a body that is, that exists, correct? They have, okay, okay. A tenant of a successful district is having a strong local organization that represents the laborers within it and that has a voice to the administration and they're to the, and to the superintendent, therefore that pathway to the school board and can do some negotiating and can go ahead and do some, and can be taken seriously by the administration and therefore those above, I guess, the school board, whatever. I believe that the Lynn administration is absolutely, would listen to our local association with regards to bringing concerns to them. I've been, I haven't told anything to the contrary of that. It, it, it's, it's a hallmark of a successful district to have that organization be taken seriously, be vocal and be putting things out that are like this on behalf of the teachers in the district.
All right. Enrollment is always a question mark, maybe not for Lynn. Fatima and Oshamoy fights this all the time, but across the state, we're seeing maybe some unrest. They've been trying to, at the legislative level, at the state, they've been trying to really push the, you know, open districts, you know, the school of choice, I think they're calling it. And basically that gives the opportunity for somebody to say, okay, well, I might get to go to this district instead of here in Lynn. How do you feel about that? If it ever, you know, do you support that kind of idea? Yes or no and why? And we'll start with Jamie. I'm picking on you.
I feel like it. I don't know, I think kind of mixed emotions because right now our school's supported by our county paying taxes. So, you know, I think, I mean, would they pay a fee to come in? I, I don't know. I, I would have to get a better feel of how that might work out for our district. You know, I think that that was already somewhat occurring to begin with. I feel like there were a lot of people that would say their address was a certain area so they could go to a certain school, so. I don't know. I, I'm just saying based on conversations I've had. But, you know, I think the reason that these families are looking to go to those other schools is because of opportunity. So if we've taught people from Lynn that are leaving Lynn to go to Fatima or Shamois, why are they leaving? What, what's driving that decision? And so I think as a district, we should look to see why they would choose to go somewhere else. But, you know, it might be beneficial to us if we had other kids coming to our district. So, you know, it can kind of work both ways.
I'm against legislative school choice because it becomes a class issue. Those with, with, who are better off financially are exactly the, the people who are able to go ahead and pick up and take their children elsewhere. I think that we can, we need of course to focus on doing as good a job as we can internally. We're always competing as private schools as it is. We have to make ourselves as good as we can regardless. I think that the broad school choice issue statewide would disadvantage certain district, certain public school districts, not ours, probably here at R2, but certainly within the two metropolitan areas. It could go ahead and cause them to deteriorate. Brett, I'm against school choice for that reason. I'm always for calling ourselves more accountable, setting our social standards higher, making ourselves a better product for folks wanting to come. I'm always for that. But I'm against the issue of so-called school choice, which would, by the way I understand it, make, I could go ahead and pick up and I could just, just via a certain paperwork avenue, like go ahead and bike ride transportation, I'd take my child anywhere. We create an athletic nightmare as well. That's not as important, but that's no small thing that if you, if a bill like that were to happen.
Albert?
I myself is, I'm just against it as well. I mean, how would you even plan a budget or anything like that if, you know, kids will be jumping from district to district saying, well, well, I got this opportunity to go to here for this particular opportunity, or maybe later on in the year I can go here. And, I mean, that's not educating kids, in my opinion. I do think that we do have a good school district here. My two daughters have graduated, two others are still in school here. I mean, I had the opportunity to take my kids over to Fatima as well. I could have done so, but I didn't. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm totally against that choice. I mean, it's, it wouldn't play out well, I would think.
Dr. Womack?
All right. I'm nixed on this. I've seen, I've seen school choice actually designate the schools where I taught in R2. The kids would, the rich kids would move out and then the ones that were left would, it just doesn't create a great school culture. You're growing out all the heterogeneity out of, out of the, out of the school and allogenees and then that's the standard that just goes around. But I also am conflicted because I feel like a parent is going to have to choose. Like, they're going to, if they have the choice, they're, they're trying to make the best choice on what's going to be best for their child. And while that is difficult from, that, that might cause, you know, difficulties on the side of the side, it might be really beneficial for that individual. And so I think as a statewide, like overall legislation, you know, I also support it. I don't think you should do a blank or wide statewide. But I think you're going to have, like, at the local level, I think it's smart to look at the pros and the cons of all of these choices. And you're really going to have, like, as, as a school district, we're going to have to make ourselves more and more attractive to these parents as a family. Whether that's, you know, gaining athletic programs that other schools don't have, whether it's, you know, going back to a five-day school week, like making the school, making the, the district more, you know, desirable for these parents is one that will really help out.
Okay. Larry, I saw you raise your hand.
Along with that line, I, not only do the kids leave, but the, the school has to take the money. You know, however much money they are supposed to get per student and that goes with them.
Right, I understand that. That, that certainly would create, and I think that's what Albert was referring to earlier is as far as making budgets would be really difficult.
About three thousand is good.
Yeah, it's, it's quite costly. I have one final opportunity for everybody here in a moment, but before I take any of the questions from the audience, I would like to introduce the incoming superintendent at Linn or two, Mr. Bob James. On the stand, just kind of give everybody a wave, sir. We want to welcome you to the community. You know, I know you're from this area now, but, but welcome to tonight's thing and I look forward to working with you. Do you have any questions of these potential upcoming board members that you'd like to ask to kickstart the public question period?
Not necessarily. I'm curious what your meaningful motivation is for serving and is the service position in the community or different things that bring people to service. So I would be curious what your meaningful motivation is.
Okay, we'll start with Albert.
I think being in education all these years, I just want to see the kids succeed and not, or keep succeeding, not that they're not already and that, and we need to provide teachers with opportunities too and the compensation that they need as well.
Brett, why don't you take it next?
I just think the experience I have in public education is going to be, I'm going to be able to translate that to a positive vision from our, from school district. I believe I'm going to make good educational decisions for our kids. I'm 100% positive. I'm going to do that if you guys vote me on the board.
I don't know. For me, I'm very long on our office. I feel like I've been called to serve the community. I feel like I have the skills and the knowledge and the expertise in a lot of different areas that could really benefit the community. And so I'm being a certain leader and want to do this as well, I think, for my community.
So for me, it's more personal. Football is a huge driving factor for me and then I want to be supportive of it. As a parent, I am already very active with my kids with that St. George. So I just wanted to be involved as much as possible and this is a way to do it.
Anybody else from the audience have a question? Nobody has a question, no? Okay, Tassie.
I'm Tassie Womack. I'm AJ's wife. You all have talked a lot about teachers and, well, my husband was a teacher and we want great teachers, but what, who else is responsible for kids' education? And what, what is important to you that the community or, or parents do to promote the school? Because as a school board member, you might have a child or a grandchild in this school district or you might not have a, a kid in school right now. But I don't think necessarily the sole focus of the school board should ever be just teachers. We need to focus on students. You all have talked about that, but what other, who else is responsible for education besides teachers?
Pam? Start with you, Pam.
Well, this one's draining because it's the parents. Absolutely, for my children, if I want them to succeed, I have to stay on top of them myself. Unfortunately, you know, you have busy lives and sometimes things get lost in the heat of everything. But I definitely think parents need to be more involved with their children. But I also think that parents need to have a good communication with the teachers. If they don't have that good relationship, sometimes unfortunately, you know, you don't get the support you need. So I, I think it's kind of two-fold, but absolutely you can't just be the teachers.
Good, if you're, all right. My teaching experience that I've seen, like, great students come from amazing families, great students come from really harsh families and everything in between. I think the community itself is what's going to ultimately be responsible for the students' education. The teachers are part of helping the classroom, but as a teacher, we realize that there are some things that we just cannot control. And so maybe being more vocal and better, communicate better to the community as far as expectations for our students would be a good way to increase education.
Brett?
Every taxpayer has a, a hand in our kids' education regardless if they have a child in the building. And we're beholden to them. And I think that if we are transparent, prudent, you know, fiscally responsible people who handle taxpayers' money and are very open about improving that to community members, I think that is a long way of building that bridge of trust between ourselves and the community. I think that's one of our jobs as a board member right there, as well as creating transparency with regard to how we're governing and like making it clear and open exactly how we'll make, you know, the decisions that we're making within, you know, in a public forum and going forward and what type of, how are we marketing ourselves? How are we going ahead and getting that information out? I would assume we're doing a good enough job of it. I think that there are some things we can do to go ahead and enhance that a little bit. I, but I think those two- I, but I think those two things, the good scoors of, of taxpayer dollars, and we're going to provide good brass communications between ourselves and the community that we represent.
Yeah, I think that parents have a, a lot of responsibility as far as the kids', uh, education and things still. Uh, we're, we're, I mean, students model after us, so if you don't have that support at home, uh, the teachers do what they can do. Most time, they're gonna do anything they can for those students, but they can be the parent as well. I mean, sometimes you have to be, but you need the support of, of the, the parents at home, you need the community's support, uh, to go ahead and have successful programs and things of that nature.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions?
I have a question.
Carol?
Some local, some school districts have established foundations to provide input support to local school districts. How open are you to that kind of formation, of that kind of an organization? Um, some do scholarships for students, you know, through outside funding. Um, it's kind of a separate entity, but how open are, would you be to establishing some sort of a foundation for Lennart Two?
Albert, can I start that?
You know, I think there are, there are great things, and, and they can do a lot of great things for, for, uh, students. Uh, our district, Lennart, I think, have, have benefited from some of those foundations within their communities. Anytime we can get, uh, kids some money, uh, to continue on with their education, is a, a good thing, I think. Uh, usually those things are kind of run separately a little bit, but, you know, in coordination with, uh, people within the district to, you know, do an interview process or whatever as far as scholarships goes. I could see it being used for other things as well, maybe supporting other programs.
Amy?
Well, as a parent, I would be fully supportive of it. I've got a kid going into, you know, ninth grade next year, and there's so many opportunities out there that you just don't even know what to go after. So, I think any kind of expertise that can help support our kids is a great thing to go after. Um, so, I definitely would be supportive of it.
AJ?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, if they are, you know, taxpayers, let's give them a voice. Uh, it doesn't matter if they're considering it or not, if it's a separate entity that's built upon taxpayers, let's, let's give them a voice. I think anybody who is willing and able to, like, benefit, or like give their time and energy and money to the school or students, like, let's, let's hear it, right? We don't need to be selective on who's gonna be helpful. We, we need to, like, use the entire community to, to help support these students and give them the opportunities, um, regardless of source.
Brad, you have a question?
I mean, yeah, I'm supportive of any organization that wants to go ahead and, and support its education or athletically. Of course, any community partnership that has to be a foundation, that we build is gonna enhance our brand as well. I mean, like, we should probably be in the business of that as well. Like what we're given, uh, whatever, like a rattle off about State Tech or whatever, which we already have, of course, that relationship. But I mean, any way you expand it is gonna go ahead and, and, and increase your marketability, which is gonna be important for a school district, just like it is for, like a business, a public business. Because again, I know I sat there, I sat there and went off, I'm against school choice and stuff like that, it does not mean that we're not in competition for others for kids, because we kind of are. We're always in competition with, with private schools for kids, with geography to be in place, where most schools are gonna go there. But you don't want people to pick up and move because they don't think you're delivering good products. You want people to come here because they think we deliver good products. And one way you do that is build those pathways to be in place.
Um, also in attendance tonight is our high school principal, Jeff. Jqueez, is that his name? Jqueez, I apologize. Um, did you have any thoughts or questions you wanted to ask these candidates tonight?
No, I just want to thank you all for sharing your time with me. I guess my question is, um, how do you see for the growth of land and how are you going to continue to improve curriculum based, right? How many, we are a tax deficit as far as budget wise, and we're trying to fix the asset, we are enhancing that, but what other resources are going to help us size administrators and teachers, sort of, should you see?
AJ, what's your view on that one?
Um, just overall, um, I, I think there needs to be more homes in land, I don't know, like, there's just, uh, there's just not a lot of places for people to live here. Um, and we're gonna start, like, all right, let's start today, so let's get people into homes, right? Let's get more homes here, that's gonna bring more tax money, all right? And that's gonna be, that's gonna, that's gonna fund our, our things. But how will we do that? Is this working with contractors or getting land, whatever? I think that's gonna be a big step moving forward for the growth of land. We've seen huge growth with, with Lennet, uh, Lennet State, sorry. Um, and then, uh, uh, and, but, like, I think we've kind of saturated the area and around here with, like, rental, but like, I think, I still think it's hard for people to find homes here in land. I know it took, took us two years to find home in land that, that suited our needs, and, um, it's just tough. I think somehow finding, like, affordable housing for, you know, even for our teachers, because I know sometimes that, that they have a hard time finding homes here as well, but like finding a, so that's where I'll start. So starting, starting with, you know, we're looking at the city level, like growing there, and then, you know, growing our residential income, and then how does that, that all feed, because that's more money that we can then take to the schools, and then, yeah. What was the rest part of your, the other part of your question? Sorry.
Just how you, how it's continued to support, so we can go about a great year when we can use this to.
Yeah, I, so I guess, uh, you know, that's, once, once, once housing is in, like, I think that's just, that's renewable income every single year, and so I think that's, that's, that's a, that's a great way to start.
Brad?
Um, with regards to growth in Lynn, um, I think Lynn is growing right now, it's the first time since I've lived here that it is. It's growing for two reasons, it's growing because Tate, State Tech is expanding, and the success of State Tech overall and how it markets itself is going to bring some more people in the community, and a football program is going to bring some people here, just simply always does, as the data always shows us. That's two reasons. So we are gonna bump up population a little bit, I would think, just simply because of those two things. Now, that doesn't happen overnight, but there are developments. It's, it's going to happen. There's going to be, uh, growth to what, whatever you're reading. Um, with regards to curriculum enhancement, um, I would be interested in working with the board regarding what their plan is for spending that surplus we talked about. And if I have it to spend, I spend it on largely probably electronic-based software, software programs that would assist primary school kids with regards to state assessments. That would be the first place I'd go with. But I mean, then again, I'd have to look at everything we got going on, I'd have to draw from resources from our administration and you guys, and of course, I'm talking off the cuff to a degree, but that would be my suggestion.
You know, as long as I've been here, we have, I believe we have, seen some growth within the community. We are seeing some subdivisions and stuff built, and et cetera, that, that go forward again, uh, Tech, State Tech's bringing in, uh, some additional people and et cetera. Uh, people, you know, most of the time, people from Osage County wanna stay in Osage County, so those, those families that are growing and, or they're gonna come back and et cetera. As far as, uh, how we're gonna help the teachers and whatnot, I think that's gonna depend on, you know, we get some, uh, keep continuing on with, with some of the things we're doing, the older teachers getting with the younger teachers and helping them out and whatnot. It doesn't always translate from money, throwing more money at a, a thing is gonna make the kids learn. I mean, you gotta have that good base of those teachers, uh, to get, to see what things are working, what is not, uh, make corrections from there going forward.
Well, I'm kind of in agreement with everybody else. Our community's already growing. Um, I feel like we are trying to do our best as a community to stay up with it, but, um, I still think we're behind. I, I, we're doing a lot of catch-up right now. Um, but for me personally, I feel like if, you know, I'm trying to support our community voluntarily, absolutely doing fundraisers, you know, I already do a lot of that for St. George, so I would find out how we can help in other ways. Um, but I also think, you know, it's working with the city to say, hey, we need improvements, we're growing, we can only grow so much if you don't support us, so.
Well, to be honest, you know, the school is not part of Lennet City Limits, and the annexation of that area to include State Tech and the, you know, various homes and divisions out there has been undertaken for several years, and it's just not gonna happen. But if it does manage to get out there, then that certainly would enable you to maybe help, you know, I understand what you're saying, but maybe getting the city out that far would enable some more of those homes to be built or things of that nature. Um, as far as, to piggyback off what Jeff asked regarding what would you do, you know, to help us, you know, get resources for curriculum, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, but I believe it was about ten years ago that the last effort to raise the property tax was defeated. Uh, still at two seventy-five. Is there any thought, anybody up here, you want to talk about? How would you go about making a pitch to voters to, to see if there's a chance to increase that just a little bit to help give you more operating revenue? Um, do you agree with that approach, possibility, and if so, how would you go about it? Start with Albert.
I guess that's a, a touchy situation. Uh, I think, you know, over the years, it's been a hard sell for a lot of community members. Uh, but I think, I mean, if you, if, you gotta get enough group of people together, it's gonna take everybody working, it's gonna take, uh, administrators getting out there and selling things, I mean, selling, you know, the increase to people, uh, whether it's just going to, you know, territory organizations or other community events, or, or whatever the case it is, uh, letting the people know that, you know, we really could need this and would do a lot for our kids.
AJ?
I think transparency would be good in this case. Um, in order to get the community to support any kind of increase, you're gonna have to tell them what you're gonna use those funds for. Um, unfortunately, I think for Lynn, we have a lot of low property families, so that's something else that we would have to really consider, uh, and what impact that's gonna have on them. But, I, again, I think it's being transparent, saying here's what our goals are and why we need the funds and how we're gonna use it in order to get any kind of community support.
AJ?
All right, um, I think homeownership is a huge part of, like, being, like, successful as an adult and just being, um, um, more steady, you know, and that's, that helps the, the students that come from those families and everything. Um, I think, I'm just throwing this out here, probably gonna upset some people, but I know in, we, we were in Charleston, and all of the non-primary homes were actually taxed a higher rate. Um, and that allowed for, you know, that brought in a lot of extra tax revenue because of, you know, like these summer homes or beach homes that developed in Charleston. Um, however, I feel like maybe setting up a, a tax system like that where maybe we are, you know, taxing these secondary homes, these non-primary residents of these would maybe open up some more homes, take them from our rental property into maybe to selling, that would make it more stable. I don't know, I'm just thinking out there, maybe I should stop because I just remembered that.
That's quite a question.
Um, I subscribe to that. I think the exact thing you alluded to, I believe, I've got the experience with that deal, um, I think that's one you're talking about, you know, like, the, uh, with regards to, uh, asking taxpayers, go ahead and give more money to us because of some sort of development or project we're gonna do, we have to do a needs assessment ourselves with our community partners to make sure that we are gonna be able to be, number one, make sure that we're agreeing with the new need, said thing we're talking about, that we built a new high school there, and the, the, all that, you know, all the development, all that. Um, you know, make sure that there's a need, make sure we're on the same page going forward, make sure we're absolutely transparent as we can possibly be, and specific with regards to how that money's gonna get spent, and specific with regards to how said development, capital project, whatever you're talking about, is gonna enhance the education work in this community. If we go through all those steps properly, I believe most all communities, no matter the political spectrum, generally support legislation to increase taxes to, to benefit public education. That, that generally does happen. Uh, but you've gotta go ahead and, and, and we have to convince the, the people, the taxpayers, the patrons, that there is the need, and that what we're gonna do is directly try to translate to, to be a better education product for our kids, if the need's there. We just have to go ahead and find that plan very, very specifically, and go ahead and make sure people are, uh, able to translate that themselves.
Okay, thank you, Albert. Is there anybody else that would like to ask a question? Derek?
Hope to go on to the question. I have a, a comment about, talking about how we're gonna, you know, pay, pay the people or whatever the case may be. You know, I was around ten years ago, and here in Lynn, I've been here for forty-some odd years, we build buildings, but when we talk about a let me increase for salaries or whatever, it goes down in flames. We're, and I've been on board for six, you know, six years as well. Every time that you ask for something like that, we will build buildings, but we do not want to pay the people. Here, I've done every bidding, and we've tried that through the years, and it hasn't worked. That's why we're still sending them, and we don't want to flip, and, and by, by state law, we have to raise. To the men.
Thank you. What's your question?
My question is, in a recent newspaper article, the Lennart Two principal proposed the idea of decreasing the fieldhouse seating capacity by removing some of the care of bleachers to construct additional health, uh, classroom, health classroom. How would you collaborate with school administrators and teachers to utilize all facilities while at the same time ensuring equality and use of facilities by all sports and extra critical activities, as well as accommodating graduation attendings?
Okay. AJ?
Well, we just have to be, we have to talk to the teachers, we have to see how those facilities are being, being utilized. We have to understand that at some point, there's gonna be a maximum capacity, you know, for graduation or whatever we use that for, or we have to understand that we have to, we can maintain a facility that allows that capacity here. Now, maybe that means getting, um, creative about where we do graduation, maybe it's not in the fieldhouse, and we put on, on, on the field somewhere, and then we just, we put it, we want to stand, there's lots of different options. I think sometimes, um, we get caught in the idea that this is how we've always done, this is how we've always done, this is how we've always done it, and, uh, you know, I'm not from here personally, so I've been doing two graduations, C-Rob and Dethnis, and that's about it. Um, so, I, I've been inside the fieldhouse with, like, oh, I have a facility, I want to bleachers as well, I'm super proud. Yeah, and, uh, what was I saying? Yeah, so just making sure that the facilities, that we just, we have a really good understanding of how those facilities are gonna be used, as well as how those facilities are, um, the expectation of using those, and some hard choices may have to be made, or we're taking away from others, but as long as we have a solution for the problem that we are creating, by, as I say, eliminating seating, like, make sure we know what that solution is ahead of time, we've tested it out, we know that it's gonna work.
So I think, like AJ's saying, you're gonna have to do a lot of research to see where all the issues may come up. Um, of course, being a big picture thinker, trying to problem solve as much as possible, but unfortunately, you're probably not going to make everybody pleased with whatever choice you make. Uh, so having that open communication, allowing people to come to you and voice what their concern is, and tell you, hey, you didn't see this, because most likely, we're not going to see it all, um, that'll at least give us an opportunity to fix whatever problem we create, so just open communication.
Albert?
Again, I would have to look at the situation, talk to a lot of people about, about it. Uh, I hate to see seating taken away from, with the ceiling over there, I mean, even if it is only used a few times a year, uh, even if we did, you know, we put that up on surplus, you're not gonna get much of nothing out of it. nothing out of it, because who's got those colors or whatnot? So, what are we gaining there? Yes, we probably do need additional space somewhere, but surely we could get creative in finding somewhere that we could go with those students to have a good education.
Not proving the situation. You're talking about, like, talking about making the upper deck of the fieldhouse across there where the weight room is a classroom? Is that what this is?
Yeah.
Turning it into a classroom?
Right.
Okay, I guess I'd be asking if we need classroom space. Would be the first thing I would ask. Like, you know, if we do, well, to me, a classroom space is going to take precedence over the capacity for graduation, if framed just like that.
Well, what about, if we ever get to, you know, have a different?
Right.
Basketball or anything like that?
Well, it's more, but, but again, like I just said, if I were to choose, the classroom space has taken precedence over.
And you look and make sure that all the classrooms are used and everything.
Well, yeah, I'm going, I'm going to presume that, that will have been done in order to even have the community like that.
Right.
I'm going by the assumption that all that, that's right. So, I could just like, kind of like, question as frame, that's the only place we can put that classroom? That, I, okay, that's the place we put the classroom. You know, we can explore going different places with it and so on and so forth. But I mean, I get the inconvenience of not being able to host a district event, I get the inconvenience of graduation, hopefully all that was part of the conversation.
But equality among the facilities, everything used equally by all the other sports and extra critical activities.
Right. I don't know if I'm following that quite, but like...
Well, to make sure that, that, you know, if that's being used for health, then, you know, isn't our classroom somewhere else that it could be used?
Yeah, again, Larry, like, I just not having been part of that conversation at all, I'm going to assume that that conversation had to have taken place should the decision have come to us period at all. That would be the way I would agree, the way I would respond to that, okay?
Okay. One more opportunity. Anybody else? Yes?
So, in my opinion, like, maybe there's a disconnect, relational disconnect between the faculty or the teachers and those who have the ability to retain them, when we're talking about retention. And we talked about the building trust within the community and establishing relationships with the community members and the school board. What would you all do to establish those relationships with the current faculty and staff and build that trust with them?
AJ?
Just listen to their needs, like, understand where they're coming from, understand who they are as a teacher, and like, if they're thinking about leaving, why that's the case. A lot of the issues I feel like, you know, humans have in general is just miscommunication. And so, just really sitting down and listening to other people goes a long way into solving a lot of those problems. So, building those relationships, I feel like, would be the best ways. And when you're talking about stakeholders who can retain, I assume you're talking about the board? Okay. Yeah, just like I said, like, regaining the relationship with LTCA, regaining the, or regaining the, just the trust to be open and honest with the board from the teachers themselves. I think that would be the way to go. That's what I prefer as a teacher when I was teaching. I felt like I could go to my superiors and really voice myself, and I hope it's the same up here. If not, I want to, I want to, like, facilitate that relationship.
Brett?
Just see, my most important job is, is working with my colleagues on the board to go ahead and hire the best possible personnel we can from support staff to teachers to administrators, that's part two. You know, we're going to work together and go ahead and hire the best administrator we have. I presume we've done that, as far as I'm concerned, we have. Going forward, that's going to be a goal of mine. There has to be, I think, a strong local community teachers association with the big voice, go ahead and go a long way in, in what you're talking about, in healing those, the wounds that you have brought up, which I'm not specifically familiar at all. But like, if, you know, like, a strong local community teachers association can really be a voice for the, for the teachers, support staff with regards to that. And if you're going to have quality products, you're going to have to have that pathway of communication among all the educators on board. They're all educators. It's like, you know, that's going to have to, the working relationships are going to have to be quality among all of us if we're going to be successful.
Yeah, I'm, I'm always open to listen to everybody's opinion and draw for those to make a final decision along with the other board members as well. Sometimes, you know, there's always people that don't want to talk directly to other people, so maybe doing a survey or something like that to get some other comments from other teachers as well, that don't want to be vocal in their community, might be another option that we could pursue to find out everybody's opinions.
Well, I'm pretty open. I feel like people feel like they can come to me and talk to me. You know, I think getting up in front of people and talking is somewhat difficult, especially when you're talking about something that maybe isn't the best subject, might cause some people to get upset. So, personally, I would hand out my number to those teachers and say, call me. You know, if you want to talk, tell me what's going on, let's hear the concerns. I definitely think building more relationships is good. As I kind of said before, I feel like the relationship with St. George and Lynn has been more competitive, and I wish it wasn't. I wish it was more supportive. You know, with my son going into eighth grade next year, it'd be wonderful if he could meet some of the teachers that he might have next year, because it's going to be a whole new experience for him. But I just think giving someone the opportunity to have a voice is important, so I'd basically be available.
Can I, can I say something?
Could I say something?
Let's let Brett answer first and then, yes.
Sorry. We take climate and culture surveys here. Does she know it? Anybody? We can do that. You take a climate, culture survey, and you go ahead and learn a little bit about the temperature of relationships among staff members, among administration. That could be a tool we can use. We've just done that for just a couple of schools. I just popped in there.
Go ahead, Brett.
Well, I just want to make a comment as a, as some of the other people in the audience can, are in the same sort of situation I am. Former student, parent, board member, employee, I've seen many different boards and administrators, principals, superintendents come and go. Some administrators welcomed interaction between board members and patrons. Some administrators did not. And, you know, you as a board, and Jamie, you specifically, offering to give your phone number out to people, that's, that's a good thing. You know, as a board member, I would hear all sides, and then I had to decide what was the most factual information. Everybody sees the world from their little corner of the world. As a board member, sometimes it's hard to discern, you know, what you really need to listen to. I appreciate all of you showing a willingness to be open and to have interaction with the parent, or patrons, not just parents, taxpayers, and the teachers, because we've, we've had some extreme situations here, and some many years ago, where that did not happen. And it takes a long time to gain people's trust once you've been through that kind of an experience. I was an employee here during the years of Dr. Kirk, and we suffered greatly because nobody would listen. So, I appreciate your willingness to be open.
Anybody else? Okay, we're going to go and wrap this up. I do have a couple of things to say. With regard to the interaction in the community, that kind of thing, I know many, many years ago, there were pretty routine and regular meetings held between members of the public. I represent the newspaper. Some board members served on in a committee fashion, and we would meet at the school library or what have you, and it was kind of just an opportunity for people from the community to tell administrators, board members, what have you, this is what we see, this is what we want. And it was a face-to-face that, quite frankly, can't be accomplished in a board meeting. You know, the board meetings are not designed for that kind of thing. I know there's an open forum portion of that meeting in which you can voice your questions, concerns, but you don't get an immediate reply. Whereas in a community setting like this, I think it'd be a good idea to at least consider that moving forward. I'm not asking you guys to comment on it, I'm just taking something for food for thought. Finally, I again want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Thank all of you for your questions, your thoughtfulness and attentiveness during this forum. And I want to remind you, the next Tuesday is the day to get out and vote. So, if you have any further questions of these candidates, they might be willing to stick around for a little bit. If there's anybody that would be willing to help me put these chairs back, I really appreciate it, okay? All right. Thank you all very much.